This meeting is called to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance by Diane Branson.
Please rise. Now you can. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings bestowed on each of us and for the opportunity for peaceful assembly and the privilege of living in a country that values diversity and freedom some of the others cannot imagine. We ask that you bless and keep us as we go forward in our separate ways this evening. Christ make you happy.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening making our announcements and events is Finance Director Joel Wells. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. Please be sure to contribute your paper for recycling to the fundraiser for the new Halton City Public Library's Children's Department. Special bins are located at Fire Station Number Three, that's the station up on the loop underneath the water tower, at the City Hall complex, and at the Halton City Senior Center located on Burne Street. A screening of a video featuring the judging of last year's images of Halton City photo contest will take place at 6:30 PM Tuesday, March 11, which is tomorrow, at the library. Photographers say that watching the contest judging gives them a better idea of which entries to submit. Deadline for this year's contest is Saturday, March 29. Entry forms are available at City Hall and at the library. Check the city's website for information. The Easter Bunny will be a special guest at this Friday's Halton City Public Library Storytime. Toddler time begins at 10:30 AM and preschool storytime begins at 11:15. The Easter Bunny will arrive at 11:00 AM to visit with both groups. Be sure to stop by and say hello. And the Library's Children's Department will celebrate St. Patrick's Day this Saturday, March 15, with a leprechaun hunt. The fun will begin at 2:00 PM and will feature stories, refreshments, and crafts along with the hunt. There is no charge to attend. City offices will be closed Friday, March 21, in observation of Good Friday. And finally, filing for a place on the ballot for the May 10 City Council election concluded at 5:00 PM today. Candidates desiring to file as a write-in candidate may do so before 5:00 PM on Monday, March 17. Places Three, Four, Five, and Six are to be filled at the next election. As of today, the incumbents in each place are the only candidates to file.
Thank you, Joel. Appreciate you. Next, we have a present-- oh, Mr. Clark.
May I ask Joel a question?
Before he leaves the building?
Sorry, sir. I didn't hear mention of an Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
Did I hear or didn't I miss it?
Mr. Mayor is not here to answer this question for you. There is not an Easter egg hunt scheduled per se this year. There is a Sports Day, I believe that's what it's called.
Spring Fest is typically when we've had the Easter egg hunt and Easter is early this year.
Yes.
So Spring Fest is after Easter this year.
But we are having a Sports Day at the approximate date that we would have been having the Easter egg hunt. That was a lively discussion point in staff this morning, and now that the city managers come in, I'm going to immediately defer safely to him.
What are we talking about?
I didn't hear mention of an Easter egg hunt.
We're asking about the Easter egg hunt that we're not having.
You're right. We're not having one. There you are. You want me to explain why we're not having one?
Sure.
I was afraid of that. Is that the only-- he's leaving. He's bailing out on me here. That's all right. That's all right. From a-- with Easter coming early, from a timing standpoint, some of the other activities that are coming on with the proximity to Spring Fest, because Spring Fest is not typically at the same time with this, we decided to put our efforts into a-- into the Spring Fest with a sports theme as well. Now, we've-- after talking with the Parks Board, we've-- we are going to be doing a type of hunt then at that time, but as far as trying to do something in time for Easter, which is less than two weeks away, I'm not sure we can pull that off right now. But at the time, we've gotten some negative feedback here in the last few days about not doing one, so we're trying to come up with some type of compromise to appease that need for a hunt.
Okay.
But we'll have a treasure hunt, is what we're going to call it.
At a later date.
In April.
In April?
In April.
At Spring Fest?
Yes.
What about the Sports Fest?
It's more of a sports theme, and I can't really comment because I don't know all the details of it, but it's going to be more of a-- what Parks is going to be doing is having it more be a more of a sports type of theme with the Spring Fest.
Oh, Spring Fest?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I--
And I'm not-- I'm being vague because I just don't know. I should know, but I don't.
I bet we get to talk about this more.
You think?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we have a presentation. This is March for Meals Proclamation, and I'm going to present this proclamation to Mr. Lee Sloan, who's here with Meals on Wheels. Is that right? Okay. All right. I'll meet you down here.
We appreciate you coming here and representing the Meals for Wheels, and you've got a special guest with you?
I have my nine-year-old son right here. He's never been to a city council meeting. Wanted-- he's in Boy Scouts and wanted to get an idea what the civic process is like.
All right. Great. Well, you're watching it. Stay tuned. All right? Well, welcome. This is a proclamation for March for Meals. Whereas Meals on Wheels Incorporated prepares and delivers meals to elderly and disabled persons who are unable to prepare meals for themselves, and whereas for the past 34 years, the citizens of Tarrant County have benefited from the delivery of over 10 million meals to our homebound neighbors, and whereas this organization has a volunteer force of over 3,700 persons who donate their time, vehicles, gasoline, and energy to deliver over 600,000 hot meals to Tarrant County residents annually, and whereas Meals on Wheels caseworkers make over 10,500 home visits annually to act as advocates for clients, and no client has ever refused service because of inability to pay. And whereas these efforts have resulted in the improvement of the lives of the homebound and disabled in Tarrant County with continued personal independence, daily visits by carrying volunteers well-balanced meals, and the assistance of professional caseworkers, now therefore I, William Lanford, Mayor of the City of Halton City, Texas, and on behalf of the City Council do hereby proclaim March for Meals Awareness Month in Halton City. Mr. Sloan? Thank you for your service. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would--
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, residents of Halton City, I represent Meals on Wheels, and as the mayor said, we deliver over 3,000 meals a day to residents of Tarrant County without regard to ability to pay. They get well-balanced, well-nutritious meals, but right now, our biggest need is for volunteers. It takes less than an hour a week to make sure somebody has something to eat in your community. So, thank you very much for your time and the proclamation.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, the next up is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by the council with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless they are moved by the-- from the Consent Agenda. Approval of the Consent Agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with the staff or board recommendations. And tonight, the Consent Agenda includes Items One, Two, Three, and Four. Any motion to dispose? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
And a second? Oh, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That would be for a second.
Then moved and second to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous approval. Item Five, under the regular agenda, we have consideration or action regarding the appointment of the City Secretary. Mr. Mayor, you want to introduce our new City Secretary?
I believe he's in the audience. He is in the audience. The previous City Secretary, Ms. Brenda Dennis, left in December. Since that time, we've advertised and conducted interviews. Council's had interviews. And please present for your consideration, Mr. Art Camacho, for the position of City Secretary for the City of Halton City. And as you said, Mr. Camacho is in the audience. I'm not sure he's prepared to say anything. I think he's just here just to see if this really happens or not. He doesn't-- But we're excited that-- about him coming, and hopefully the council will confirm his appointment.
All right. Mr. Camacho, you want to raise your hand so everybody can see where you're at? Yeah, there. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Ms. Reese?
Are you ready for an announcement?
Well, certainly would entertain a motion.
All right. I can't pronounce your last name, I'm sorry, but I move to make Al our new City Secretary.
Art.
Art, I'm sorry. Art. I'm sorry. I had a good night.
Starts with an A. All right. Do I have a second? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's for a second.
All right.
She's going to call him Al the whole time.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Mr. Art Camacho as our new City Secretary. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sutton?
I just want to thank Mr. Camacho for applying for the city, and the qualifications you're bringing to this city are going to be very helpful in managing this city, and I just hope that the citizens get to know you. We were very pleased with how you interviewed and were very pleased to get to know you and your qualifications and what you can bring to this city. So, we're very grateful for you for applying and look forward to you being on board if this vote passes.
Any other discussion? If not, please register your vote. And it is unanimous. Well, Art, by the skin of your teeth, you're the new City Secretary.
He will-- that will be-- and I guess maybe I should have clarified, it'll be effective next Monday.
Next Monday, okay. All right. And again, just to echo Jim's words, welcome to Halton City. Think you'll be a nice fit. Art comes to us from Azle and via Ranger, I believe it was, or yeah. So, we'll be looking-- we'll have a new Halton City resident here. Look for you. Thanks. Item Five, this is the issue of toll tags. Consideration and interaction regarding the approval of an agreement with North Texas Tollway Authority for the distribution of toll tags.
We just dealt with that. That's number six is what we're doing. Apparently is what they're pointing out to you here. It's number six.
Oh, did I say five? I'm sorry. I stand corrected. It is item six, but it is toll tags. Joel, you have a presentation for us, and Joni? You going to introduce?
Yes, sir, I am, Mayor. I was just turning on the projector real quick while wrapping up. But yes, I do want to introduce tonight Joni Williams with the North Texas Tollway Authority, who will be making a presentation for the public's benefit and for the council's benefit. Of course, she did brief the council and pre-council about the attributes of the toll tag program. This is something that is-- it's a nominal dollar amount value to the city, but we thought that the opportunity to provide the citizens with a new service was so important and so valuable that we wanted to bring the item to the council so that we would have a chance for it to get the kind of attention and publicity it deserves. And so, I'm going to pass off to Joni and let her take over from here, and this does come loose if you want to be able to move around with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you once again. If Halton City decides to become a third-party vendor, what's in store for it? The citizens of Halton City will be able to save up to 40% compared to cash customers. You would also be able to save time by going through a tollway, driving on a tollway. You can have your toll tags in family packs, so up to three toll tags, it's $40. It acts as a prepaid account, so you pay as you go. There are no additional fees or annual fees. Four to six vehicles, it's $80, and all four to six vehicles pull from the same funds. You can use your toll tag in the entire state of Texas, so that's Houston, Austin, and Tyler, as well as the Metroplex, Dallas-Fort Worth, Enlafield airports. You can also use your toll tag to park at DFW Airport as well, and we charge your credit card directly. You can maintain your account online, so you can print out your receipts for your expense reports, or change your credit card information, or any-- you can change everything on your account except for your name. What is a toll tag? A toll tag is an electronic transponder that mounts on the windshield of a vehicle and is read by radio frequency. You can use our toll tag in the entire state of Texas. Once again, it is operable with other toll agencies. This is a system map to show our tollways. We have President George Bush Turnpike, Dallas North Tollway, Addison Airport Toll Tunnel, Mountain Creek Lake Bridge. We are working on Southwest Parkway in Tarrant County, as well as we will-- we are scheduled to take over 121 in September of this year. And hopefully soon, the City of Halton City will be able to issue toll tags. So, you can come right here to your City Hall or go to the website and fill out the application, get your toll tag, and then come here and pick it up. Thank you.
Joni?
Yes, sir.
Are there any toll roads in Texas you're aware of that these tags won't work? I mean, you named several that you know they will.
Our toll tags will work in the entire state of Texas regardless of what tolling agency.
And Ms. Branson wanted me to ask you, can those things read them at 110 miles an hour?
If they can-- yes, they can. I was about to say, they can beat me up. Yes.
All right. Mr. Hutchinson?
Joni, is there any extra fee when you-- when we work in conjunction with other cities? I know this is North Texas toll tags, but when we work in conjunction, the other toll booths will-- areas will read, but will there be an extra fee attached to that if we go to another one besides ones in North Texas?
There's no additional fees if you use a tollway in another city. However, you will not be able to save like you would in the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Explain to us again, as you did in the back, if I have a toll tag and I take the George Bush, some of that revenue comes back to Tarrant County? I thought that was very interesting.
That's-- you're speaking on revenue sharing. TechDOT distributes the money that-- the monies that are-- that's allocated to the different counties, and it's based on the number of toll tags that are registered in that particular county. So, Tarrant County, depending on how many cities are registered, or how many toll tag users are registered in your city or in this county, TechDOT will distribute the excess funds from the tollways back to your city.
So, in other words, and bottom line, so I can understand it, is that the more the Tarrant County people use their toll tags, the more dollars they bring back into Tarrant County?
That's correct.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on, Joni.
I'm sorry.
Oh, ready? Okay. Joni, back in the back, you had mentioned that you're going to maybe change your transponder technology later on in the year. If that does happen, is there any charge to upgrade the transponder if someone buys one now? And if not, then what will be the procedure to update that transponder?
We haven't officially ironed out everything with the sticker tags. Sticker tags, there's no fee for it. Actually, we're going to-- there's talk that we're going to issue them out for free versus with our current transponders, there's a $25 fee associated with any toll tags that are lost or stolen. With this particular setup, the sticker tags, you can just get another one and just call to activate it to your account for your vehicle. So, but that's still in the works. There's nothing official or defined yet, but we will be rolling that out later this year.
Obviously, with it being a sticker tag, it's less likely to get lost. Right now, the transponder that's there--
Right, because it's stick on your windshield.
Like on my windshield, it's held on by Velcro.
Right.
So, I mean, those things--
And they can be stolen, too, but the sticker tag--
And they can be stolen. Like if you go to a car wash, take a car in the shop, you want to take that thing off because it does--
Right. Okay. Ms. Branson?
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to back up to something that was asked about a discount. So, our-- the residents in Tarrant County, I think you said get a 40% discount using the toll tag going through?
Anybody who has a toll tag, they save up to 40% compared to cash customers.
But if I use it in Austin or Houston, do I get the 40%?
You do not have that savings.
I pay the full price down there.
Correct, because North Texas Tollway Authority does not own or operate those tolls.
It's only for the North Texas tollways up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the other thing I want to ask about, which is going to lead into a question that I want to address with Joel and Tom, the sticker tag, you said sometime this year, third quarter, fourth quarter?
We're not 100% sure right now.
Okay. So, before December the 31st, there should be sticker tags.
We are, yes.
Okay. Which is where I want to go with, and this is probably for Joel and Tom. Do you want me to ask it now, or you want to wait till everyone's through?
While you got the mic, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Cool. My opinion is that a good number of the individuals that use these stickers are employed between eight and five and are using the tollways that use these stickers. I would like to look for Halton City to become less transactional and more consumer-based, and I do believe that the citizens are our consumers. So, I would like for us to visit an option, and somewhere along the way, great minds can get together, where the sticker-- the tags can be purchased outside of eight to five Monday through Friday. There were a couple of options mentioned in the back. I think that would be a great service to the-- to our citizens. I think we would have more participation. It will cost me more than $5 to drive from where I work to City Hall to pick up a sticker. So, I would like to see us become less transactional and more customer service oriented in that respect.
Ms. Branson, once we get the methodologies down and get it running smoothly at the city, we will explore at least two possible locations, one being the library and one being the recreation center. But like I said, we want to try to get our procedures down, get everything secure, find secure spots in the library and in the recreation center, and then we will explore moving the units there and get everybody trained. One thing that the Tollway Authority does do is they will come in and train our staff on how to use the tollways authority. And then, at that point, once our staff's up to speed, then we can go out into the field and train the staff in the field such that we can go to other locations. And this is something we will do as soon as we can get our procedures and policies down and get everybody sufficiently trained.
And I understand that for the type of tags we have now, but since she just mentioned that there were going to be sticker tags that didn't have a $25 replacement fee and that those were replaced, that's why I was inquiring as to when that would be in effect.
That replacement fee was just-- she wasn't committing to that. That's a maybe right now.
Well, for the ones we have now, they mentioned $25 in the back.
Yeah, that's a definite.
But the sticker tags would be-- they'd be like stealing an inspection stick. It's going to be a little tougher to get one of those off that you can reuse. But anyway, I would like to go on record as requesting that we look at how to offer this service since we want to offer it to our citizens and because North Texas gets a benefit from the more toll tags that we have here, that I think it would be good to look at servicing customers outside of eight and five for citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes, Joni, again, could you explain some of the benefits of overseeing this NTTA, overseeing this whole situation, and you explain some of that in the back with respect to having cameras that you guys look at, helping cars, and participants who drive on the tollways, on the tollways? Could you explain some of that?
Yes. North Texas Tollway Authority, we have a command center that's 24/7. We have cameras on all of our toll roads that can monitor the traffic if there's any accidents, if somebody gets a flat tire. We're automatically dispatched to come out and assist you. We also have a number on the back of our toll tags where our customers can call, and we can come out and assist them if they're located on one of our toll roads. We really pride ourselves in our command center. We also have sensors on our toll roads to detect ice, like recently when, you know, we had the winter weather come in in March. Our dispatch was able to go ahead and notify our sand trucks to go ahead and get ready and start putting sand on our toll roads. You're welcome.
Ms. Branson?
I'm sorry, me.
But I think one thing that Joni mentioned in the back is that we're going to have a link on our website so that the citizens can log and do complete paperwork.
They can log online, go to your website, click on our link, fill out the application online, and then come to whatever location you designate to pick up your toll tag, whether it's City Hall, recreational center, library.
And they can reload their card online, too. They don't have to come anywhere to reload it.
Let me go ahead and speak on that a little bit further. When a customer comes in, fills out the application, whether it's online or in person, they first need their driver's license, credit card, and the license plates of their vehicles. So, those are the three most important things. For up to three vehicles, they're initially charged $40. All three vehicles are linked to the same funds. Anytime the account drops below $10, their credit card is automatically rebuilt for an additional $40. So, it automatically replenishes itself once it drops down a certain number. You can go online and increase your rebuild amount if you know that you travel the toll ways quite frequently, but the minimum is $40.
That's great. Thanks.
And you can manage your account online.
Let me add one thing to this, just from personal experience, because I've got one of these. I've got several of these things. When you get new tags, new license plates, you need to go online and change the plate because they check that. If you go through it and your plate doesn't match the tag, you get a little letter, a little nasty gram from them. And if you really need to change that--
Personal experience?
Personal experience, yes.
What do it say?
Says, "You owe me a buck twenty." On this case, yeah. On this case, it was a buck twenty. But yeah, you really need to update that. Very, very easy, very user-friendly. It's really a very effective website.
The toll tags are linked to the license plates of your vehicle, so it's very important, like Mr. Mayor said, to keep that information updated.
All right. And the link is not active on our website yet, but soon will be.
Well, y'all got to prove it first. I can't.
Okay.
But once you do, then we'll pull that trigger.
Okay.
Got to go through proper procedures.
Tune in. All right. Any other questions? Any other questions for Joni from the dais? Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Any further discussion before we entertain a motion to dispose? Then let's have a motion. Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the toll tag distribution program that is being presented to Halton City for the citizens of Halton City.
And Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
And moved and seconded to approve the approval of agreement with the North Texas Tollway Authority for the distribution of toll tags. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous approval. Next item on the agenda is Item Seven, Flooding and Erosion Issues. This is an update and discussion on flooding and erosion issues. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. For the skyline banner area, I've got nothing to say. We're done, so I'm not going to comment anymore on that. Hopefully, in the summer, we'll have more as grants and stuff come-- as grants and stuff come, hopefully come in, and we'll start the mitigation process with Skyline. Regarding Big Fossil Creek, the project was put out to bid, went out to, it was in the Star Telegram last Wednesday. Several firms have picked up plans. I have visited with all the property owners except for one, going over the plans and talking about what, how the plans are gonna impact them, talking a little bit more specifically about the public-private partnership, and, you know, what was gonna really be needed, 'cause we're getting to a point to where there's gonna have to be a lot of paper flying around, mainly from easements, liens, and that sort of thing. There is, what I've briefed them on, briefed the residents on, is a, from a public-private standpoint of a, you've heard me talk about a financial participation from all the property owners, and how to do that, whether we do it through assessments or, you know, what kind of mechanisms do we use. I've talked to Wayne's office about coming up with a mechanic's lien, and it's, it does apply here. It's something similar to what you would do if you got like a new roof on your house or anything like that. It's more like a lien, you know, they could certainly participate financially in it now if they wanted to, or if they chose to defer it, they could execute the lien. Recommend the lien be interest-free for the first year, and then after the first year, whatever the market rate of the prime rate is at the time we execute the liens would kick in. So, as far as what the basis of that is and the amount is, I'm still working on that, and still, a lot of that's gonna depend on how the bids come in as well. The bids are gonna be coming in on March 26th. In the bid packet, we've, we're requiring all the bidders to qualify themselves, to explain the different projects that they've done of Gabian walls that are at least 20 feet in height. And coming in the 26th, that gives us time to go out and actually look at the work that they've done previously. But it's my intention to bring a recommendation to the council for April 14th. Assuming that everything goes well there, then we'll be looking at, you know, probably getting bonds to get our executing contracts by the end of the month. Hopefully, get some dirt thrown around by early May. We've got a 90-day construction time in the, in the bid packet. So, we'll probably be looking at completing it by late July, early August, pending weather. But that's where we're currently at. I've got, do have plans in my office if anybody does, if any of you do wanna get more specific with it after this meeting, I'll be more than happy to share with you. The wall is about 900 feet long. In some places, it's as high as 33 feet high. From where it's gonna be put in, from the water line, it's probably gonna be more like 27 feet high from the water line. It'll be anchored, tied back into bedrock using about 250 tie rods of various different lengths and thicknesses depending on where it's placed on the wall. I think that's about it. Have I missed anything, guys? I think that's, probably told you more than I really planned to, but that's really kinda, if you wanna get more specific with it, you guys, I can share with you the plans after this meeting if you'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Branson.
Just, just real quick, do we still have to have Army Corps of Engineers approval? So-
Yes.
Have they committed to how fast they can get it?
They are, I'll go as far as say they are not being a problem right now.
Good.
They are being cooperative. I do have two congressional members' offices standing by if we need to, but right now, I don't think I need to use their weight. They're playing ball with us.
Great. That's good news.
All right. We'll have one speaker sign up here. Leila Keraway, Leila? Gonna pass? Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that update, Tom. That's a, that's a, that's a real good update. Appreciate it. Any other-
It's, it, the walls, what I've told them all, the wall's not gonna move. It's, I'm extremely confident of what this thing is gonna do, is control the erosion that's already there, that our infrastructure's gonna be protected. And they're gonna certainly glean the benefit out of that, but that, I'm very impressed with what we've seen, from what I've seen. Very impressed.
Good, good. Any other discussion on flooding and erosion issues? Now, we'll move on to the public hearings portion of our meeting. Item eight, ordinance number O-2008-008-15, is conduct a public hearing and consideration interaction regarding approval of ordinance number O-2008-008-15 to vacate and abandon a 40-foot by 50-foot street right-of-way situated in the Sarah Sawyer survey abstract number 1424 in the city of Halton City, Tarrant County, Texas, being a portion of Oak Street as dedicated by the plat of the Watauga Edition, Tarrant County, Texas, is recorded in volume 106, page 25, plat records, Tarrant County, Texas, for the purpose of utilizing said right-of-way as an emergency access and cross-access easement. And this is the first reading of this ordinance. Mr. Pliska, you wanna tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you said, Mayor, this is the Oak Street right-of-way. It is located in the 6,000 block of Huddleston Street. This small section of right-of-way is a southern part of Lot 10, Block 29 of the Watauga Edition. The owner of Lot 10, Mr. Jerry Kate, is in attendance tonight. He is proposing to replat this small section of right-of-way into proposed Lot 8R, and you'll see that on the next item. This portion of Lot 8R will be used for landscaping and a portion of the emergency access and cross-access easement. The right-of-way area is also indicated on this proposed plat which will follow this item. At their meeting of February 26, 2008, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to adopt this ordinance, O-2008-08-15, vacating and abandoning this 40-foot by 50-foot street right-of-way, and authorize the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed, releasing public ownership, interest, and control of this portion of the right-of-way. Therefore, I formally submit the following attachments for your review and approval: ordinance O-2008-008-15, Exhibit A, which is a field note description of this said right-of-way. It's also indicated on the following plat. And then, to address state issues, letters from the property owners of interest on both sides of this, and then, of course, one of those letters indicating from Mr. Black that he wishes to have no interest in that. So, I formally submit this information for your review and approval. Standing to answer any questions.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, didn't we have one vote against when it 5 to 1? You said we had a unanimous vote?
No, actually, it was unanimous vote on the right-of-way.
Okay.
It was a 5 to 1 on the following plat.
Plat, okay. I stand corrected. Thank you, sir.
Right.
I was there.
All right. Any other questions from James from the dais? All right. Thank you, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Invite Mr. Jerry Kate. Do you have comments you wanna make, Mr. Kate? Please introduce yourself up here at the podium. Give us your address as well.
My name is Jerry Kate. My office is at 6151 Huddleston, and I'm just here tonight if you had any questions that I could help you with that James hasn't already filled you in on. I'm here for that. I hope everything goes smooth with it.
All right. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Kate while he's up here? All right. Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing then. Any audience member wishing to make a statement for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance number O-2008-008-15, which is the Z-002-08 right-of-way abandonment.
Ms. Branson.
I'll second that.
And this is for the first reading.
For the first reading, I'll second.
For the first reading. All right. It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number O-2008-008-15 in first reading. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous approval. Next item is final plat, item number nine. This is a public hearing, consideration and our action regarding the application of Jerry Kate for the final plat of lots 6R, 7R, and 8R Block 29, Watauga Edition, being a replat of lots 3 through 10, Block 29, lots 1 through 3, Block 30, and 9 through 10, Block 30 of the Watauga Edition in the M1 Industrial District, containing approximately 1.6021 acres of land located on the west side of Huddleston Street in the 6,000 block of Huddleston Street. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As I stated previously, that a right-of-way abandonment is part of this plat and is indicated as such. If you'll note on the plat document itself, near the Huddleston Street description, it does indicate the portion of Oak Street to be abandoned by this plat as well. Okay? So, we're doing it by ordinance, and we're also doing it by this plat. As you stated, Mayor, the applicant is replating the property in order to develop the site into three, possibly four, office warehouse facilities. The proposed lots are located on the west side of Huddleston in the 6,000 block and are indicated by the plat we've got submitted tonight. The site will be divided into three lots, as you stated. Those are 6R, 7R, and 8R of Block 29. The combined lot acreage is 1.6021 acres. As we discussed earlier, this final plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the February 26, 2008 P&amp;Z meeting. The decision was a 5 to 1 vote with Commissioner Millhall in voting against the recommendation. Therefore, I formally submit the following attachments for your review, GIS aerial in order to indicate the site, final plat documents, site plan document inspiration, landscape information, and also a pre-development drainage plan to indicate the nature of the topography at the site. And there was extensive discussion at P&amp;Z for that, so I provided that document tonight. So, therefore, I formally submit these documents for your review and approval. And Mr. Kate is here in attendance, sir.
Thank you, James. Any questions for James from the dais? Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James referenced the drainage study, page sheet four or five. There had been discussion at the P&amp;Z reference Sally Street where it connects with rust that possibly someday come into the back of the property and comes south. I believe by the topography that you have here that that's almost impossible because of the drainage and the fall-off. Is that not, can you address that? Is that correct?
Yes, I'd be glad to. And that's why I included this document in tonight's packet. At planning and zoning, there was some discussion about a possible easement or right-of-way on the west portion of the property in order to have access to the, I believe, 10 acres to the west for maybe a future park. However, the grade here would not permit that, and Mr. Kate is the owner of the property, he could probably get into it better than I can. But I did wanna include this document to indicate that steep grade where an access easement would not be possible on this portion of the property. It has been discussed at other meetings with the developer and other property owners in the area that we would extend Sally Street to the west, and you'll see Sally Street to the north of this document. That is the preferred method of access to that adjoining tract to the west.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, lots 7R and 8R are not developed, correct?
That is correct. If you'll look at the aerial that we've provided, you can see that area that's outlined there is undeveloped. And then, of course, you can see we're on the western end, the steep bank that's there on the, on the west side. But yes, this is an undeveloped piece. These are small lots that were prior subdivided for mobile home usage.
Right.
And, of course, this usage has not taken place through the years. And with the abandonment of Oak Street, they, any developer needs to come in and clean this up and erase these lot signs and then restructure or reconfigure for future development.
Right, okay. With the drainage map there, it looks like we're gonna, when we, when the concrete, if this is approved, the concrete goes down, there'll be some more drainage onto Huddleston Street. Has there been any study showing that that's not gonna overwhelm the storm sewer system in that area, James?
Yes, that's a good question. If you look in the bottom-left corner, it's got pre-development drainage calculations, and those must fit into, into the equation, so to speak. It shouldn't impact.
And I assume that those do fit what our model for that area. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes, thank you. One thing I didn't ask in pre-council, it just struck me with this topography map, and Mr. Kate may be able to answer this better than I can, better than you can, but I wonder, too, that with this M1 and M2 zoning here that we're gonna do, if it fits our comprehensive land use plan. As you indicated, it was a mobile home park or leased sites for mobile homes at once, at one particular point in time. I know that there's some, I think there's some industrial businesses up and along, Huddleston along there, and so I'm wondering if this fits that, this warehouse, these warehouses and whatnot.
Yes, sir. Even though, again, the property was subdivided as such, it has been zoned industrial for quite some time.
Oh, okay.
Look at the old maps.
Okay.
You know, there were some, even Skyline itself is zoned industrial, and we discussed that during the floods. So, that area is zoned industrial and has been since, you know, on the oldest maps. Why it was subdivided into trailer parks, I don't know. It's way before my time, if you can believe that.
And one thing I ask, too, and Mr. Kate, again, I'm concerned about Huddleston. This street looks fairly narrow. I know there's some industrial areas, but the usage, the warehouses, are we gonna have big, heavy machinery or big, heavy driving equipment going in and out? And is there adequate ingress and egress?
Yes, sir, and that's a good question. Again, the use of the property will be dictated by the permitted uses of the zoning district. That is light industrial. It's M1. Most of the uses in that area are electrical, plumbing, contractor, office, storage, warehouse areas. There are some automobile uses. Those include mainly small incubator-type businesses that eventually grow out of that leased space that's across the street. There's an existing, the fire department uses them extensively. They, they remanufacture firefighting equipment there from around the mid-cities and metroplex area. So, most I've seen on that has been very light bobtail-type truck traffic, not any heavy semis, because they're not really delivering to anything. There's no industry on there. Maybe these are small incubator-type businesses, and I believe that's what Mr. Kate is gonna propose as well. These are small office warehouses that, again, probably electrical or plumbing contractor or some small contractor will use.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And it is compliant with the plan. In answering to the second part of your question, there is, for the future land use map, that does designate that portion of Huddleston as light to heavy industrial. Yes, sir?
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Kate. We discussed the water and the water flow, and looking at the map as it shows the land dropping off to the rear, will you bring your concrete up level for your businesses, or will you keep the downslope in the water where naturally go to the rear? What are your plans there?
Yeah, and we should have a drainage study there that shows the flow of the water, but over half of the property, I think, flows to the back, and a small portion goes to Huddleston. The majority of it goes to the, to the northwest.
So, you will probably, or most definitely, utilize that? It's just natural?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Any questions from the dais? All right. Seeing none, I'll open up public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item nine, final plat? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve on the first reading, final plat P-011-07.
I think this is the only reading here.
Oh, is this, is this the only reading on this one?
I'm correct.
Yes, there'll be two readings on the right-of-way abandonment, but there'll be only one reading on the plat.
Mr. Hudson.
Oh, okay.
It's a plat, so we're, my understanding is that we all, it requires one reading on a plat, so.
Okay.
And I wanna second.
Could I, could I ask the city attorney if, if something got changed on the second reading of the- reading of the legal, uh, or of the, the right-of-way abandonment, would that nullify the, the vote that we took tonight?
For the plat?
That just puts me in an awkward position because I thought this was gonna be a sec, a second reading also because of the right-of-way abandonment.
It may depend on what gets changed. It's kinda hard to answer that question.
Typically, nothing would get changed.
Typically, it wouldn't.
Right.
Sorry.
It'd just be a formality.
Right. Did, did you hear my answer?
Yes.
Okay, my mic wasn't on.
Okay.
It, it, it might depend on what gets changed and...
Okay.
So.
Are we at any legal risk of ta- of voting on this finally?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Well, then I, then I make the motion for, uh, approving final plat, P-011-07.
Okay.
The only reading.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve the final plat. Um, where is this description here? Oh, okay. The final plat of lots six R, seven R, and eight R, Block Twenty-nine, Watauga Edition, being a replat of lots three through ten, Block Twenty-nine, lots one through three, Block Thirty, and nine through ten, Block Thirty, the Watauga Edition in the M-one Industrial District, containing approximately one point six oh two one acres of land located on the west side of Huddleston Street in the six thousand block of Huddleston Street. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please register your vote. And that is unanimous approval. Thank you. Item ten, ordinance number O-2008-004-04. This is consideration and our action regarding approval of amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Halton City by amending Chapter Ninety Traffic to add a new Article Six Automated Red Light Enforcement. This will be the first reading. Lieutenant, carry it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to not request an amendment to Section Ninety of the Code of Ordinances. Uh, this is for the purpose of implementing a photographic traffic signal enforcement system. Uh, this ordinance provides that owner of a, the owner of a motor vehicle is liable to the city for a civil penalty for running a red light. Back in September, we entered into a contract with Redflex, uh, Traffic Systems for the implementation of a, a red light program. Uh, this ordinance is required under state law to fully implement that program. Uh, we're ready to move forward with it at this time. Uh, the state law requires appointment also of a citizen advisory committee, and that committee is, uh, is, one member is appointed by each member of council for a total of seven members. It would also require, uh, traffic engineering study for each location where we intend to implement a, you know, traffic safety or traffic red light enforcement, a camera. The ordinance will also allow for a nomination clause. Uh, this is for the owners of vehicles that actually own their vehicle to someone else. Someone else runs the red light and they get a citation or a violation notice in the mail. Uh, this nomination allows them to give us the name and address of the actual driver of the vehicle at the time so that that violation can be addressed to the actual violator. The ordinance also allows for an administrative adjudication hearing. Uh, this hearing, again, is for those that want to protest the violation of running a red light, and also for an appeal hearing, uh, for those that do not agree with the, uh, administrative adjudication hearing officer. Uh, the ordinance also provides for, uh, the sharing of the funds as in accordance with state law. The citations roughly are seventy-five dollars, uh, for each violation, and with that, the city can pay for all funds associated with implementing and maintaining the program, and then the remaining funds must be split with a fifty-fifty share with the state, and those funds are deposited into, uh, the regional trauma account with the state. The funds that the city then keeps, uh, are dedicated towards traffic, pedestrian, and public safety programs, to traffic enforcement, and to intersection improvements. And I'm open for questions.
All right. Any, any questions? Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes, Lieutenant, uh, you, you mentioned citizens advisory committee. Were there also, does this ordinance also provide for a hearings administrator, someone who, who, who will be over, in charge of that?
Yes, that's gonna be the administrative adjudication hearing officer.
Any other questions from the desk? Mr. Sutton.
Just to cl- uh, clarify one of the points that are, draw it out a little bit more. Uh, so the, the funds, the revenues from this do, do not go into the general fund of the city. They go into improvements in intersections and, 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 uh, pedestrian safety, things like that, right?
That is correct. The state law mandates that the city set up a special account for those funds, and those funds, as they are dedicated back towards, uh, traffic, pedestrian, and public safety programs, uh, towards traffic enforcement and towards the, uh, intersection improvements.
So can you give an example of a traffic and safety program that would be a, a candidate for this funding?
Uh, traffic and safety programs can, can include, uh, seatbelt education.
Okay.
Uh, again, red light education where we go to the schools and we, uh, speak with students there, uh, job fairs as well, where we discuss, uh, pedestrian safety in the intersections as well as red light violations.
Okay. So this is not being added to the general funds of the city. This is specifically targeted to reduce the incident of red light, uh, programs that, that, that help with that or help with driver safety.
That is correct.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Ragsdale? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'll now open up a public hearing. Any, uh, any citizen wishing to speak for or against, uh, please come up the, to the microphone. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to dispose. Mr. Cabano.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number O-2008-004-04, the Automated Red Light Enforcement System on the first reading.
Mr. Clark.
Thank you, sir. That's for a second. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number O-2008-004-04 on first reading. Uh, any further discussion?
Please register your vote. That is unanimously approved. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is our Vis- Visitor Citizens Forum. This time is set aside for any person having business before the council that does not schedule on the agenda to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than individual council member or staff. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate any issues brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not a posted agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. And with that, uh, we'll accept, uh, anyone who wants to speak and address the council, please come forward. Mr. Watkins, please introduce yourself.
Bob Watkins, sixty-one forty, Blues Brew Circle. I'd like to thank the mayor for making the presentation.
Did he give the wrong address, Jimbo?
What he's, what's he, what's the matter with him? Sixty-one forty, Blues Brew Circle. He doesn't know where I'm at.
That's the funniest thing I've seen since I've been here.
Tell him I can't address the audience.
Okay.
I'll address him later.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mr. Watkins.
I'd like to thank the mayor for, uh, moving the presentation over there. Uh, it, it made, so we could see this gentleman speak and get the, get, get the proclamation. Uh, I think it would've been nice if it'd been someplace different when the lady spoke on this over here, but I did get to see the presentation in there. Um, I still believe that your, uh, it appears that, uh, audience, the, the citizens are being discouraged from coming. It's easy for you to say that you can look at it on television, but if you bounce out here and look at it on television, if I wanted to look at it on television, I'd stay home and look at it on television. I believe the podium ought to be over there. Uh, I would like to make a comment. It, because she had her back to me, I don't believe she mentioned the fact, which I asked her, that, uh, that these, uh, these toll tags, uh, do not expire. I was interested in that because a person that, like myself, that only goes to Dallas at gunpoint, I might go ahead and buy one, but, uh, I might go ahead and spend forty dollars if I could use it next year or year after next. Until they put a toll roll, I'm here at the stockyards, I probably won't need it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Anyone else in the Visitor Citizens Forum? All right. We'll, uh, we'll draw that to a close and then move on to the next item, item eleven, resignation of board members. Do we have any resignations? Seeing none, we'll go to twelve, appointments or reappointments. Ms. Reese?
Thank you very much, and I would like to appoint Darlene Hooks to the alternate place on ZBA.
Darlene Hooks? Hooks? Yeah, it's, there's an application. Okay. All right. Uh, please, please register your vote. And that is unanimous approval. Any other, uh, appointments or reappointments? Seeing none, we'll go on to, uh, attendance requirements. There are none. Do we have anything for, um, for executive session tonight? Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, then, uh, under section... Mr. Holcomb?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I, I was trying to get my ducks in a row here, and I missed the opportunity. I've got a, a, uh, nomination I'd like to make for Crime Control Prevention for, uh...
Oh, okay.
Steve Bowman. I'm sorry, his name is Robert S. Bowman.
I think it is Steve.
He goes by Steve.
That's what the S, that's what the S is, yeah. For, for what?
That would be the Crime Control Prevention Board.
CCPD? Okay. And, uh, council, please register your vote. That's unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Anybody else with a appointment or reappointment? Okay, flashing back to executive session. Under Section five fifty-one dash oh seven one, oh seven two, oh seven four, we will now move into executive session. Uh, let's We're, uh, we're back in regular session at nine forty-five. Uh, we do have action to take as a result of our executive session meeting, and I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Cabano.
I, uh, move that we take the, uh, action for the city manager as discussed in executive session.
That would be with respect to his new salary?
With respect to his, um, yes, sir.
All right. Uh, uh, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as for a second.
Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, clarify the motion is, um, involving salary and benefits.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please register your vote. That is unanimous approval of the city manager's new salary. Um, thank you, Tom, and thank you, um, council. This meeting is adjourned.